Good evening and welcome to the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four school committee meeting. We've just returned from executive session. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call of school committee members. Michelle Kirk be present.
Tim Knight, present.
Will Horn, present.
Diana Frashella, present.
Leo on? Thanks, Leo. Okay. Next up, I'd like to open public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input either here or through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
I'm Carrie McManus, one Nobscot Street. I'm here as a girls' captain, hockey parent. Just a question regarding the increase in athletic fees that's on the agenda for tonight. Wanted to know if this will affect this season's athletic fees and specifically how it might affect the girls' program. We just have one team, so one sheet of ice, and wanted to know if the increase, if it is to happen this year and affect the girls, would follow the girls' programs? So the fees that the girls' families would pay, would that follow to their program? Or is the approach more that it's one pool of money?
Given that we will be voting on this tonight, so this will be another topic or conversation. Do you mind answering the question now?
No, no, no. It does. The plan was to implement that in the twenty-four, twenty-five season.
Okay.
It was girls' and boys' hockey.
Okay.
And what was the other question?
So we're wondering, because we just have one team, one sheet of ice for practices and games. So would the fees that the families are paying, would it be that the funds that the girls' program generated would stay with the girls? Or is the approach that it would be one pool?
It goes into one fund.
One big pool of money? Okay.
Because, I mean, to be honest, the other sports have been subsidizing hockey for many years.
It's an expensive sport. It is.
It's been so expensive.
Okay.
That's the plan.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Are you saying that it's one pool for all of the sports? Or for hockey?
For all the sports.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's a revolving account.
Yeah.
Yeah. No hands are raised.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes from the regular meeting on eight twenty-two. We have the student out account, student activity account adjustment journal, which is twenty-twenty-four graduating class to gift the remaining balance of their student activities account to the class of twenty-twenty-five. The Medfield High School overnight trip approval, the Model UN Club to attend the twentieth annual session of the Brown University Simulation of the United Nations in Providence, Rhode Island from November eighth to tenth. And then donations, two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents from the Dale Street PTO to be deposited in the Dale Street Gift Account, an ice maker for the Dale Street Staff Room, a one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars from the Wheelock PTO paid directly to Plymouth Patuxent Museum for the third grade people of the dawn presentation. Do you have any questions on anything in the consent agenda?
How much money does this, is the class leaving, doing out?
A little over three thousand.
Yeah. How many students are going to go on the overnight trip?
I think that was in the, I don't see. I'm not sure. I think it's probably about fifteen.
Okay. Do we know how many chaperones are going?
So Rachel's going to be there supervised, Rachel Buckingham. So if it's fifteen, so one person would, would be enough.
Okay.
Yes. Nineteen kids.
Okay.
Is that right here? Nineteen, right?
Yeah.
Do we have any edits or corrections or anything we want removed from the consent agenda?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries? All right, moving on to new-
Leo, Leo, I couldn't, I didn't.
Leo?
I said, okay, sorry.
I'll call his name next time. Thank you. Moving on to new business. We just returned from executive session, and in executive session, we approved the contracts for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council Number Ninety-three, Local Three Nine Zero One Custodial Group, Administrative Assistant Group, and Cafeteria Group. Anything to add on that?
Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Summer projects?
Michael is here, and he will give us an update on the summer projects. I know that if you looked at the materials, you saw we got a lot done this summer, upgrading our facilities in many different ways, individual classrooms, parking lots, you name it. We took a lot, took care of a lot of things that were needed this summer. And also, Michael's going to address the issue around the tennis courts, too, which we finally have someone that has been on that. So, thank you, Michael.
So before I start with the summer projects, I want to thank our maintenance team, Shane, Stan, and Richard. And I also want to thank Ben, our project manager, who helped us with the capital projects, and the entire custodial team for their support throughout the summer. So at Memorial School, we repaved the back parking lot, and that is now ready to go for the solar panels. We also addressed the privacy fence along the, the back of the property.
That was in really rough shape.
It was in rough shape. So we addressed that. Inside the building, we replaced the carpet at the LMC in the vestibule right outside of it. We did deck cleaning in the library, which hadn't been done for quite a bit. And then I would say right around COVID time. And then the front island was redesigned and improved so we could address the traffic flow in that area.
If you remember, that island used to be all overgrown with shrubs that were planted there originally, and it was just awful to maintain. So they came up with the idea of removing all of that and then putting the crushed dome, which really looks nice, looks sharp.
Doesn't look nice, but I was very confused when I pulled up the other day. I was like, this wasn't here last year.
It was difficult because the structure's so overgrown that, you know, the buses and, and, you know, other vehicles just ahead of life.
Yeah.
We took a couple of pictures, and you can actually see the school now. And then that's the privacy fence in the back. And then that's the carpeting that we've replaced. Okay, so at the Wheelock School, we, we did the music classroom, new carpeting in the music classroom, and which started probably a few weeks before the, actually, the summer that the students came back in. So we were able to get that completed. And thanks to the generous donation by the PTO, we were able to do the teacher's room renovation.
Looks great in the teacher's room.
At the Wheelock School. And then, you know, the other project that I don't believe is there quite yet is that we're doing a shed in the back area of the school to keep some equipment for the maintenance department. So in, on the left-
And Michael, that's a requirement, a new requirement this year for us?
It is a new requirement by the building commissioner that all of our buildings have building sheds to store equipment. So all five schools will be, will be getting a shed.
Where are our snow blowers and all that?
Correct.
Where has it been stored before?
So at the Wheelock School, in the back of the school, we have a maintenance, call it storage area.
Okay.
But because they say it's not connected to the school, that we shouldn't have any flammable in that area.
Okay.
So they designated a few areas around the schools that we're allowed to have, where we can store, you know, our equipment.
And we only keep them during the winter. So right now, they're in one of the units behind here, the storage units behind here. And that's where they are all summer, spring and fall. They get them ready for the winter, and they ship them over to the schools. And then they, they were in that, each school had one of those areas, and they were inside those areas, just in the winter, then they went back.
And they go back. So then what we do is, you know, we, we go through the whole maintenance process, make sure we shut them down, and then store them, you know, on site here. So it's, it's a process that we've done for many, many years. So the picture on the left is the carpet in the, excuse me, music room, and then that's the new teacher's room that the PTO We did a lot of work at Dale Street this summer. The main hallway in the old section of the building was painted, and a new flooring was also replaced in that whole section. So if you go, you enter the main entrance where the offices are, and you go to the right, that entire hallway was redone, painted, and flooring. And then the other wing where the gymnasium was, was also done. At the Library Media Center, we had new carpet, the carpet was replaced, I should say, and then there was flooring in the new room adjacent to the LMC where it's the makerspace room. So a wall went up, and we had to obey by the new requirements. So that wall was delayed by a year because of the new requirements that we had to follow.
And it cost double what we expected it to cost.
Correct.
Little bit more than double.
And that was, and, and, and again, that was a generous contribution by the MCP on, on that, on that space. We also addressed the water babblers in the school. So those are all new water babblers in the school. We addressed some issues with plumbing in the school, and we addressed the trees and shrubs that were overgrown for many, many years in the, off of the, not the Adams side, but the, off of North Street entrance, which we'll have some pictures for. So that's, the first picture is the carpet in the wall that was, it's new to the library slash makerspace area.
So that wall, we had, it was something that Steve really wanted to do for a long time because of so much, it just gave that delineation between the makerspace and the library, because so much activity's going on over there. So great idea to do it, but we kind of got hamstrung a little bit because the town required us to get full plans for architects, and the construction had to be done a certain way to this code and not to the code of when Dale Street was built, nineteen forty-two. So it ended up being a lot more expensive.
And that was originally a classroom. That space was originally a classroom.
I will say, because I went to the Dale Street PTO meeting the other day, though, Steve pointed out that there's now a room that they can have IEP meetings in, which they didn't have before. So I think, I know it's going to be used mostly for students, but there is an additional functionality that that room can now be used for.
The space came out really nice. So if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I would say take a tour. And then there's the water bubbler on the first floor that was replaced. So now that the, that Dale Street has the same water bubbles as the other schools in the district. And then there's the flooring in the hallway that we replaced with the painting of the walls. And then that's the front of Dale Street where all the shrubs were cut down and reshaped to make it more-
So that hallway is so much brighter. It's unbelievable. It's great now that that's all been taken out and it, and you know, frankly, it's kind of a safety issue, too, when you have shrubs that close to a building. There's areas for people to be where we couldn't see or people in the school shouldn't, couldn't see. So it was great to get all those out of there.
So at the middle school, Blake Middle School, three classrooms received new flooring, one with the carpet and two with VCT flooring. The gymnasium floor was refinished, and the ceiling tiles in the LMC were replaced. So it looks brighter, just a nicer space for the students. So on the left is one of the classrooms. On the right is the gymnasium with the new floor. And then the ceiling in the LMC. And then at the high school, again, the student parking lot was repaved. It was improvement for, for safety access. That was actually a project that we thought we were going to try to get done in the late spring, early summer of twenty twenty-five. But due to the support from the DPW, we were able to get that project in this summer, which we were really grateful for. The viewing area was resurfaced at the, on the turf field. Three memorial benches were replaced. We completed the repairs to our flooring throughout the building. The gymnasium floor was refinished, and we added efficiency measures to the boilers, which is the VFD in the high school. We're also, currently, we had to go back to the town for emergency funding because of a, an exhaust fan that wasn't working correctly that needs to be fixed. And what happened is they can't fix it. We had to replace the entire exhaust fan because of the age of the equipment. So we had to go back to the town. We got emergency funding. That is being done next week, so then we can turn the heat on at the high school.
You see in that picture that the viewing area, so that was our old mascot, we used to be on that viewing area. So we, we've been working for a few years to replace that and work with a company that actually maintains our, and does the maintenance on our existing turf field. And they also installed turf fields, and they were able to do that, do that for us. And Michael, we gotta get that a little bit more about those memorial benches?
Yes.
So those are older benches that were bought for students that have passed away over the last twenty or thirty years. They were in really rough shape. So we were able to put in those new, and the DPW helped us out with this as well in installation, three brand-new benches, and then put the plaque back on there. So they're really, and they're synthetic, so they're not going to, the old ones were wood before they made the synthetic stuff. So these, these will last a lifetime. So we're just really happy to be able to do that for those families that have the memorial benches there.
It was, it was tight. And the new benches are that new material where, you know, you're not going to get splinters.
They're not going to splinter, and they're not going to rot.
And there's the gymnasium floor, which came out really nice. So just to talk a little bit about the high school tennis courts, we originally went up for, to bid for the tennis courts, which was a combined project with the town with their basketball courts by the police department. And when the original, when the bids came back, we had zero bidders. So we went back out and spoke to, you know, the vendors that actually pulled the bid to see why, you know, they didn't actually put a bid in. And most I shouldn't say most of them, all of them said that the time constraint. So a lot of the vendors or contractors that deal with resurfacing are between eighteen to twenty-four months scheduled out, and we wanted to get it done this summer. So what we did was we tweaked the, the dates, and we did it, we put it out between twelve to sixteen months. And we ended up with, I believe it was four bidders that bid for the project the second time around. What the project was, the funding for the project is two hundred and fifty thousand. So our base price was, for the company to come in, remove all the material, put in all new material, and then paint the surface and new nets. And so that bid price came in at a hundred ninety-eight thousand. The fencing for it was higher. So because it was an alternate, we went back out to bid just for the fencing. And we're able, you know, because the alternate with all of the bidders, the fencing was between sixty to eighty thousand. But when we took it out of the alternate and did a, a separate bid for that, we were able to secure a fencing contract for thirty-seven thousand. And we knew that that was going to happen, because what happens is the contractor puts a twenty to twenty-five percent markup on their price, because they have to manage the project. So, so what we are, you know, suggesting is that we go with the base bid of a hundred ninety-eight thousand from the, from the bid. We go with a, a separate vendor for the fencing for thirty-seven thousand for a subtotal of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then we would have a remaining balance of fifteen thousand dollars, which we could talk about, you know, looking at, you know, doing something with the basketball courts. So the add-ons, again, to this project are also were pickleball lines and soundproofing and basketball courts. And none of that is included in what we're proposing tonight. Those were all additional costs, and we don't have the funding to include those costs currently within the budget that we have.
So the other thing, too, about that base price, the one ninety-eight, is it removes the existing material and then puts new material in? There was a way to do it where it would take out the existing material, grind that up, and then put it back in, but that would take longer. So we felt like it, and the longevity was going to be sacrificed, too. It's going to be, I think, I forget what it was, what Ben looked at it, but it was, it was definitely going to impact the longevity of the courts, which in our time here, we've already fixed them once, right? We've, we've redone them once. So it made sense to get all new material in there and to do it that way. So we're excited that it can get done and also get done below budget, which is great.
Correct. Yep.
So what's the timeline now that you're looking at for possible project start and completion?
So once we, we sign the contract, and Jeff has authorization to sign the contract, once we sign the contract, they're going to, actually, the contractor wants to combine it with the basketball, because they also won the basketball bid.
This is for the town basketball?
The town one over by Dale Street.
So it would be two separate contracts. One is with the, with the select board, and one would be with the school department.
Okay.
But they want to combine it, and they are hoping, you know, that if we can, they want to start it actually sooner than later. So for us, you know, the tennis courts, you know, we use them in the spring. So if they can come in before then, you know, sometime in November, that would be great. If not, you know, they can start with the basketball, and then after the spring season's over, then they can come here to the, to the high school and do it that way.
Do you know how long it takes them once they start? Like, how long the project is?
Yeah, anywhere between four to six weeks.
Okay. And can they only do it in certain weather conditions?
It, so the surf, it just has to have time to cure. And so that's why, you know, they tell you four to six weeks, because depending on the weather.
Right. But they can do it in the winter, even with, like, if it's really cold.
If it's mild, if it's a mild winter, they can, you know. So again, it all depends on the weather.
Yeah.
You know, they, they could get it done, I think, four weeks if, you know, we've had great weather.
It's like what we did with the track several years ago, right? We had to wait so that it was, because it was a subsurface, and they had to spray the rubber on top.
Right.
And we had to just wait for that perfect time. And they got it done before.
It's like a two week.
Two weeks, yeah.
In between stages.
Rains, they can't do. If it's too cool, they can't do it, so.
So that they give themselves some flexibility.
For the memorial fence, is that stained right now? Like, what's the upkeep look like on that right now? And is it possibly, like, if Memorial, like, if they're, one of their subcommittees wanted to paint on it, like, is that a project that would be something they could do?
Yeah, so, so the fencing is waterproof.
It's cedar.
It's the, you know, the school committee authorizes anyone to-
Yeah, right? No, I'm serious.
I mean, I like the way it looks right now. Not just me. I like that look. But you guys can authorize.
No, I was just curious, like, if we're looking at it, like, does it have to be resealed every couple of years? Like, what's the, you know, what does it look like in that space?
So that last fence was out for twenty-two, twenty-three years.
And there was no treatment to that. It was just a regular cedar fence.
And it did. The last few years, it was really in rough shape.
Right.
And it should have never got to that point. And so we made sure that we addressed it.
Okay.
I just want to thank Michael. He does a lot. I mean, this is all pretty much done through the Capitol Committee. And Michael's our representative on that and does a lot of work for them. And I know that they have early morning meetings, and you're always there and advocating for the school. So I just want to thank Michael for that.
Thank you. Yeah. There's a lot of stuff to get done.
I also want to thank the town, right? Because they, they always give us the funding.
And they support us, for sure.
And we had a lot of small projects that were just small that I didn't want to put up here. But we did a lot this summer. And, you know, again, the staff was great. The coordination between the vendors and, you know, outside vendors and our staff here was just wonderful.
And it also speaks to the relationship we have with DPW.
Correct.
I mean, they're phenomenal. They help us out whenever they can.
And they helped us out. So like, they fixed all the poles at Wheelock.
Wheelock, right.
That wasn't on here. There's traffic patterns that they've been helping us out with. So, you know, DPW has been just wonderful to work with. A lot of projects.
They're not just for snow plowing anymore.
Correct.
They, they help us out on a lot of stuff. They're great.
So, all right. Thank you.
Anything else? Leo, do you have any questions? No? Okay. All right, strategic plan?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as, as we have done the process last time, in August, the leadership team and I get together, we look at what we've accomplished in the previous year, and then what we focus on for this year. So we did this very similar to the year before. We did this past August and looked at some of the priorities that we want to focus on for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So let's see if I put it up there. There it is. So we did that process in, in August and kind of put that together. We, we do a good process where we break up into teams, and it's not teams that work together. We try to mix up secondary, elementary, directors and principals, that kind of thing. And then we just go through it, and we all have a certain area of the priorities and strategies, and then go and focus and look at what our focus is going to be. And we come together as a group, and we vote on what we think is the most important things for us to focus on for this year. So what you're going to see is the, is what happened at the end of our process. And then I shared this with the entire staff and faculty at opening day. So safety and belonging was our priority number one, in which we looked at. And we wanted to continue to evaluate the current practices to support all of our students and staff and their well-being. We want to continue to gather data. So we have the Metro West results, which we got the results over the summer. We'll be doing some rollout this fall, the results. Well, I'm sure we'll have a presentation here and try to have a forum with parents as well to go over that, like we've done in the past. Panorama, we're going to look at doing in October, staff, staff surveys with Panorama, and also student surveys and parents. Get that all out there in October, November, and gather that feedback as well. And then I, we framed it as a soft pilot of SEL. So we, we spent last year looking at different SEL programs that we can implement pre-K to twelve in our district. Six through seven, six through twelve was identified, a couple of programs they want to, just do some pilot of lessons and do during their advisory period. So that's what they're going to be doing this year and just giving us feedback. So it's not going to be a, a full-out pile like we do with, let's say, the language arts right now in elementary of math last year. It's, it's more of a having staff look at it, try it out, give some feedback, and see what we like and what fits us best.
When you say a couple of programs, like, what do you mean?
So two, two programs that are K to twelve SEL programs. So they, they include weekly lessons, different plans, teacher plans for, it's a whole curriculum, you know, for teachers, that kind of thing. So that group identified two of them. And they're going to be just picking and choosing out of that to see as part of advisory if it makes sense to, for us to look at it further. And then next year, do a little more, and probably the following year, look at adopting an entire K to twelve. But there's so much going on with the elementaries and doing theirs. It would be too much to kind of do this all at once. So we're trying to do six through twelve now, have elementaries do that soft pilot next year, and then come together to choose something next year for the following year.
And I just, like, is there an outcome? Or, like, within SEL, it's so broad. Is there any outcome that they're, like, that they're looking for?
Well, one of the programs that they're piloting, I think, is really good because it has a theme. So it has, it, it breaks up the year between, like, four to six themes. And then it has teacher lessons in each one of the themes. So right now, you can do that as part of advisory when you're in secondary, when you have the advisory period and say, okay, the theme is belonging. Okay? And these are some things about belonging. There's all activities that go along with that, that the curriculum has already put together. So it's almost like a, a ready-made SEL curriculum where teachers can just open it up and say, okay, this week I'm going to do this. It's not a lot of planning and heavy lifting on their part, but it's really good stuff. The two that we've looked at are really positive. And there's other districts in the state that are using them and have used them for a couple of years. So we're looking for their feedback as well.
With the, the soft pilot, you said they pick and choose the parts of the curriculum that are-
And no one's required to do it. It's, it's so, yeah. So it's not, it's not across the board. No, no, it's just the ones that, but what we're trying to do is, is have them try it during advisory so that it can be a component of that, and then, you know, report back to us. But it's, it's some really, really good activities in there that we think will be beneficial for all kids. But we just need to kind of pace this out a little bit so that we're ready to do it as a complete district and not overload elementary at this point and what's going on with them. One point two is to promote the sense of belonging, again, continually looking at the culture responsible for- culture responsible professional development, which we've done at our digital learning day or design your learning day for the last couple of years and then continue to incorporate the student voice six through twelve. We have advisory, as I mentioned before, six through twelve and then student government has always been a big part of that as well, so incorporate that student voice, student surveys, we do a lot of surveys now of kids and get their feedback at the secondary level, so continue to do that kind of thing. Our DEI efforts, so we have a new committee that's, that's starting diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, so that's the B there. We have reps from each school and then we had slides on opening day that the, this is an outgrowth of R and D this summer. We had slides that they shared at each building as part of the opening meeting from that group and they, they spoke to their, their colleagues about, you know, what we're looking at, how, why this is important and what we're going to be doing for the next year. So that's been, been really exciting that we're going to be kicking that off and that's going to be led Nat and Brenda Hagan, a leading network for the district. And we, like I said, we're representatives from each, each school, which is exciting. And our curriculum review is ongoing, looking at bias, et cetera. School safety, as you know, is always a big priority for us. We do have new radios district wide that actually helped out in the bus accident today because we could all communicate. We hear the bus, we hear the police, we hear the fire and within all schools, all in the same radio, which we never had that before. We put additional cameras in areas that we've identified, especially in this building that we needed, there was some, some blank spots that we wanted to make sure that we could take care of. We have our new SRO that's working with our, our students and our teachers and our staff right now. We started our first meeting last week was the development of our threat assessment team, so police chief and I met with the leadership at the high school along with three or four other officers and we're having that meeting tomorrow at, at the middle school as we continue to do the threat assessment teams and, and put those together. We're going to do it, there's going to be two, two-hour trainings for our staff that our police department is going to do on threat assessment teams this fall, so we can get those underway and, and working. So we're excited about that, that's something that we've wanted to do for a couple of years. And then our, our town safety committee where I meet with the police chief and the fire chief, we have our first meeting coming up in October. Restorative practices, you know, ways that, that aren't punitive to discipline, so to speak, kids, where we're still working on ways that we can do that at sec, especially the secondary level, continue to work with our teachers and staff and continue to align what we're doing with the identification of best practices that Desi has put out there for us in this area. School start time, as you know, we, we began to impact bargain this past week with the Medfield Teachers Association and we're looking at meeting again next Monday and hopefully a couple more meetings and we'll have a recommendation for you, our goal is to have that in October, at the October meeting for you, maybe in November, we're feeling pretty good, it, it could be in the October meeting. So what we looked, what we talked about this week was actual different start times for the schools and then looking for students and looking at teacher start times and teacher workday, so that's what we're dealing with right now, we'll have more information after next Monday's meeting. And our goal again is we will be implementing those new start times in twenty-five, twenty-six. Looking at community engagement and communication, we, we're still working on that internal, external communication plan. The big thing that we're going to do this year is to try to streamline that communication and use a consistent platform. I think that's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work for us, but we're, we're excited about the possibility of having one consistent platform across the entire district so that parents, especially parents that have students in multiple schools, everyone's on the same thing. We're not looking at dojo here and, and another one, seesaw here, another one here, it's just all, all the same. So we'll be working on that this year as a, as an important goal of ours.
I know that's like a big change and takes a lot of time.
It is.
I had a parent stop me yesterday though, again, and discuss how frustrating it is to have a lack of continuity between communication of different teachers from student to student. So understanding that this is a big undertaking to get that platform in place, do we have any sort of, I guess, goal or timeline for when we might be in that space to have the platform?
August of next year, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that's definitely, it's really just taking a look at what programs that are out there, like I think I mentioned Parents Grid before, I mean, that, that's one that's out there that's got some really good reviews, there's a few other ones out there, taking a look at it, seeing what they can do for us. The onboarding for that is pretty quick, they, they've got it down fairly quick now and then it would just be training people, which we would probably do right, you know, those August days that we have prior to school starting and then just, you know, get it going from there. So I think that's what we're, what our goal is to, to get that going and finally get that uniform communication instead of six different ways, you know, frustrating for sure. I think we can consistently communicate our core values, we're still doing that anytime we can publicly within our buildings, within our classrooms. I was very happy to have, when I was at Wheelock last night, a memorial student was coming in with her brother and in our, in our core values sign is right when you come in and she said, looked at me and said, we have that in our classroom too, like even the kids notice, right, little kids notice, it's awesome. So continually communicate that and, and reference that and all the decisions that we're making, that's, we would continue to do that as well. We've done some really good stuff with the website update, Owen's done a great job working with Aptogy and Chris Horan gave us some really good ideas, so we've been, we've been updating that, so it's more user friendly. If you notice on the school websites now under the news, it's not just a, a generic default Medfield news, now we're adding pictures, we're doing those kinds of things and the, the actual structure of the second page on explore has been completely revamped and, and looks a lot more user friendly. So we're, we're going to keep working on that as we go along each year. Owen has worked with Aptogy and we actually have a refresh that could, a total refresh that's, that we can, we can use next year, so we're going to look at possibly doing that as well. The homeschool connection, middle school, high school conferences again are, are a big hit and, and people are really positive about that. Continue to work with our school-based organizations, which I think we have a wonderful relationship with and we've seen at the open houses where they're all there supporting us. Had the first meeting of Medfield Talks this week with those organizations, so it looks like we have, I have a Zoom tomorrow with Dr. Jewel Walsh who is the speaker I mentioned at the last meeting. She is, she is a leading researcher from BU on the use of digital devices, specifically social media and mobile phones. So I, I mentioned to you guys, I saw her talk a few weeks ago, I, she's excited to come to Medfield and the Medfield Talks folks support it, thought it was a great idea. So we're going to target late October, early November for her to come here. We're going to try to work out those dates tomorrow.
What's the topic?
So it's really based, it's based on what, you know, what we want it to be. So I think it's going to be a few things, looking at when the right time is to get mobile phones, like what, what is that, that right time for, for kids and how parents can can monitor that and support the schools and endeavors they're doing to limit the mobile phone use and, and just shares a lot of the research of what, what's out there. There's a lot of research and she's been a part of a lot of it too. She mentioned to me that she's working with the AG's office right now, putting together a toolkit for parents that's going to be released statewide in January, February because obviously there's an issue that everyone's dealing with, the overuse of screen, social media and, and mobile phones with kids, so. She, that's what we're going to talk about tomorrow, kind of how we want it tailored and I'm going to get some feedback from the folks that, that we met with at Medfield Talks so she can design it, you know, based on that. But yeah, she's, and Medfield Talks is going, is, is going to, the PTO is going to fund that for us, so that's always the, we talked the other day about kind of the, the purpose and the process and how that all works, but then there's the payment part, right? Who's going to do that and if they stepped up with hesitation to, to pay for that. So I'll have more information at our next meeting about it. One of the things that we have to do a little bit better job of is, is build that awareness around translation services for school communications as we have more ELL students come into the district. We, we're doing a lot more translation, but sometimes we don't get the word out to those families that the translation is available, so we have to keep working on that, to kind of discuss those standards and expectations, like what documents are going to be translated, when and to whom and in what language. So we're, I know Mary's doing a really good job working on that with ELL and we need to kind of finalize that this year, so that's not an issue going forward as we continue to have more families that English is their second language in Medfield. In terms of curriculum instruction and assessment, continue to do our vertical and horizontal alignment, we've done a lot of work with that and Christine leads that work, a lot of meetings, a lot of good conversation about, you know, where certain things need to, need to be taught and where kids need to learn certain things, so that, that continues to, to, to go on. One thing that we want to add this year that we haven't done in a while is, is review our homework policy district wide. So this school committee, I think it was six years ago, we did the whole homework committee and that came to homework policy, that came out of the SEL committee. So I think it was time to kind of review that again, get feedback from parents, teachers, kids and kind of see whether or not it's still working as it is and maybe make adjustments if we need to. The professional development needs, I think we continue to do that with our, with our staff. The ARX Ed, which I've mentioned to you before, that is a company that we've, we've partnered with and I think a hundred and fifty-two other districts in the state have partnered with, that they do mandated training, they do all the modules so that every teacher and every staff member has mandated training every year they have to do and they've really simplified it so that it's, it's easy to consume for teachers, it's engaging and it's not just looking at a boring PowerPoint the entire time. That's one arm of their company. The other arm of their company is to provide collective bargaining information, which we have as well. So that's, it's a really good group and we've been really impressed so far. We just, we just signed on with them in, in August, so we'll continue to work with them. And then coming up soon, whether it's the October, November meeting, we'll have to talk about that, the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support, that group is going to come to you and show you what they did last year as part of their work and how that's rolling out in the district. So they finalized the framework, but now we need to do the professional development with staff and how we're going to do that implementation in each school. So there's a, there's a lot to that and they will be here to kind of go through that review. The SEL curriculum, we talked a little bit about that, again, there's a soft pilot six through twelve and they continue to streamline the student transitions. So we, we're doing a lot of stuff right now, but we're not documenting it. So we need to put together exactly all the, the different initiatives that we're doing in this transition from elementary school to elementary school, from elementary school to middle school and middle school to high school. We've got to put this together on document so that's there. So that's, that's one of the things that we're trying to do this year as a goal, to make sure that there's a record of it and a document of it so that everyone knows across the board, you know, what initiatives are happening with the transitions. Because we are unique in our structure, so we need to kind of, we need to quantify that in the document. And the finance facilities and personnel.
Can I just, oh, sure, yes. On three dot one, what do you mean by vertical teams?
So, so we have teams that represent teachers from every grade level that work together on one team. So instead of looking at just your curriculum within your grade level, your department, we have teachers from grades one through twelve on a team together, making sure that it all spirals and aligns all the way through the district. All right.
And then you, what do you, do you do that, like a rotation, you choose the, like why it's ELA and math versus?
So those are the two majors that we're doing right now, which probably take the most time. So that, those are the two focus areas that we, we started a couple of years ago on that and Christine's been leading that work. So we continue to do that and then we'll, we'll branch out to social studies and science as well.
Also on three dot one, can you talk a little more on what establishing a formalized curriculum review process like, looks like or what that means?
Sure. So what we would do is put a calendar together and we would decide whether it's based on what we have for curriculum right now. So there'd be a calendar would say in twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty, we'd be look, we'll look at the language arts again for elementary school. So you have it all mapped out for ten years.
Okay.
On what the review cycle is so that you're not always using the same curriculum. So we're, we're reviewing it right now, but we're doing it based on, okay, we need to review that now, we don't have it on a, on a schedule yet, you know what I mean? So we knew that we needed to, we had an older math for nine years at the elementary level, so we need to do that last year. We know that we need to incorporate more science or reading instruction at the elementary school, so we're doing that this year. So to more, to formalize it so that you can take a, look on our website and say, oh, in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, they're looking at high school science and that's going to be their curriculum review process during that time. So just formalizing all that.
So once it's formalized, you were saying that will be on the website, any parent can go like see that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else on that curriculum? And then lastly, our, our last area, the finance facilities and personnel, so develop that long-term sustainable budget strategies to address our district needs. So we've done some of the work with the solar canopies and high school boiler, working with the town on that and I think continue to have that really good partnership we have with, with the town leadership and the warrant committee. I think we've, we've seen the last few budget cycles have been very, very good. We, we present all of our information in a transparent way and it's, it's very, you know, open and honest and all that, so continue with that, you know, conversation and working with the warrant committee and the town leadership. The five-year capital plan is something that I know Michael has been, been a part of, the town. Michael, the town hired someone, right? To look at the facility, that Arrow Street? Okay, so the town hired Arrow Street to go through all of our buildings and they actually visited town hall last week to talk to us and they're putting together a capital plan to see what, you know, where buildings need to be replaced. I know there's one needs to replace over on Dale Street and Adams.
Somewhere in that.
That's, that's on, that's going to be on the list. So that they go through every single town building and give us a sense of what needs to be done in, in the capital plan, so that's been great. And I think again, working with SBC to address the, the Dale Street School and that project continues. The new revenue, revenue streams, we're still working on that. I mean, I think the establishment of fees, talk about it again during the budget season. I know that you're going to potentially vote on something tonight for those athletic fees of that increase, but still looking at other fees that we've talked about over the years. And then the long-term sustainable technology strategies. So this year in, in the capital budget, we did all new MacBooks for all the teachers. So the MacBooks were near end of life and all unit, unit A teachers all got new MacBooks, so that we're still getting them out to everyone, pretty big rollout. But that was something that was really important to us in the capital, to make sure our teachers have the, the best technology they need for their instruction and learning. And then Owen has a project of looking at enhanced wifi connections throughout the district. So that's something that he's worked on before, but now it's time to kind of get that done again. So that, that's what we came up with at our retreat and what we thought was important as far as the strategic plan piece. In addition to that, which isn't in our strategic plan, but something that I think we've talked about in this committee is something we need to do is in October, we're going to establish the mobile technology task force to look at the impact that cell phones and social media is having on our kids, how it impacts teaching and learning and how we can support our families and whether or not we need to do a policy change as a district or just keep it in handbook. So I think a lot of exciting stuff's going to come out of that, that committee and we're going to look at having students, parents, teachers and administrators and school committee members as part of that, part of that committee, so. Not in the strategic plan, but something we're going to be working on.
Yeah, it was, I was kind of, I was looking for it, I'm glad. If it weren't, would it sit somewhere between two and three, between like community engagement and communication and curriculum?
Yeah, I think so.
At first I was like, hey, wait a minute.
Both safety and belonging too, I mean, you could make an argument for all of it.
You can make it.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah. That makes, that makes sense. I almost. So we can, we can talk about how we want to structure that, you know, as far as number of parents and school committee, I don't do it today, I'm just saying, well, within the next, you know, several weeks, we could do that because I'm thinking middle of October, getting that information out and starting fresh in November, so at the end of October or early November. Getting that group together.
Okay, so you do have it in there? It, you have it as the in addition?
Yeah.
And. Saying, you know, we believe this fits.
Oh, it absolutely fits.
For sure. No, I know it fits, even the comment that it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah, that makes sense.
That way it's not repetitive.
Right.
That way part of the initial, you know, communication that it fits and everything, right?
Yeah, that or even say, you know, mobile technology task force to see below.
Yeah.
Each time, at least as a school committee, we thought this was.
Right.
Right.
It's great. I'm relieved though.
I wouldn't forget you, Tim.
I wouldn't forget problems. It's the biggest problem we have.
Yeah, sure is. And everyone, you know, from grade three up is dealing with it, right, for the most part. At different levels and different, but it's it's an issue for everyone. And adults too.
You guys have any additional questions on the review plan update?
A lot of stuff. A lot of stuff. We'll do the same cadence. A lot of same cadence we've done before, so I'll I'll give you an update in January. Kind of give you along the way, there'll be, like I said, the presentation MTSS, that kind of thing. And then we'll do the June presentation at the Anicon. The one thing we haven't done yet that we need to do in the next couple of weeks is update the dashboard. So we haven't done that. So we're going to meet with Neil to to do that. It's exactly the way it was when we left in June, so we got to update that.
That's good. And I think we, this is the cadence that we kind of devised here. Here from you and after meeting with everybody else, we talk about our focus.
Right.
Right. Right, okay. Any other items since posting on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty four?
I have none, ma'am, sure.
Next up, we will move to. Old business athletic fees. So we're scheduled to vote an increase of fees for ice hockey beginning in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five season. This was a recommendation that was made at our June sixth meeting was to increase the hockey fees from three hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars. Do you guys have any questions or comments on it?
No.
No. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to share? Yeah. Oh, that's fair. Okay. And then but boys hockey has two teams and two sheets of ice and girls hockey has one team and one sheet of ice. Do the eighth graders also pay the athletic fee? Because you guys have eighth graders that play.
But if they if there's if we get a waiver for eighth graders to come up, then they do, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And i- if it's voted on tonight, then Eric Scott, the AD will send something out to hockey families and. Do that explanation.
Even though we had discussed this at previous meetings, was this new information for you guys?
Okay, I just wanted to get some clarity because we're going to have. A whole team that was with us last year, because we did bring up the eighth graders last year. And I, you know, I've been living the program forever. This is my last kid. And people are going to be like, what's the what's the deal?
Right.
Why why is it a little bit more expensive? And we just want to be prepared for it. We also wanted to make sure that we knew where the allocations were going because there's been a little. Conversation, I would say, in the hockey community about like JV ice time versus varsity ice time versus. Girls getting ice and the boys getting it. It's just been a little bit of a conundrum. And we just want to make sure that we're not paying for the boys' ice, if you will.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? Because if we're taxing our girls' families to pay for it, which it sounds now like. If it's this huge pool that we put it in. I guess it comes out in the wash because you said that the other sports have been covering hockey for years. So, you know, that was clarity that we needed to hear, just to understand.
Now, I totally understood your question at first. Wait a second, are the girls going to be paying for the boys? But if it's a whole pool of money, it's like the other sports have been paying for hockey. For all for both hockeys.
Right.
And this was brought to us by a parent and asked us to recommend we raise the fees. Just for a little a little background.
Yeah, well, I, that's where it came from. That person's a dear friend of mine. But I think the intention was because of the JV not having a lot of ice time for the boys. And they wanted to make sure that they got more equality in their ice time and ended up hitting the girls same time. Which is where we were like so questionable. Because we were like, okay, I understand how there's been situations where. The JV boys showed up and the varsity girls were on the ice and they thought it was their ice, but it was ours. And so there's been a lot. That has gone on and distributed, like distributing the ice, I guess, was an issue. And I think that person that came up was a captain on the boys' team last year and was more like trying to advocate for. The boys' program and making sure that's all sorted out because there is a little inequity as far as how much ice time the JV gets. But that shouldn't affect the girls' program. And when I think there was a question towards that with Eric Scott and. He did say, well, Title Nine. You know, we have to make sure everything's equitable, but that doesn't feel like that's. You know what I mean? Like Title Nine means equality in girls and boys' sports.
Right.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? So we were just trying to understand. Like, I understand that the parent came. That was also after they had, like, lost ice. They were trying to get ice. There was a whole.
Right.
Issue with ice on the boys' side, but so for the girls, we were like. And if I didn't know that person, I wouldn't have known the backstory. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
And then it was like, and she said, she goes, this might shoot the girls in the foot. I'm wicked sorry. But, you know, we I needed I needed to advocate for the JV team is really what I think it was coming from.
Right.
We already have to have our ice booked right now. Do you know what we have? Yeah, okay.
There was also a piece that they brought up with, I don't know if this impacts the girls' team as well, is that. They would do fundraising to get more money and that was not. Right, it could be uncomfortable at times. Some families were subsidizing more than others. Some people couldn't. Afford as much. So by raising the fee. I think the parents who spoke said this way it becomes more equitable for everyone. And then if someone does have a hardship, they work with the school and it's not. Like, you know, parents, we need everyone to throw in another hundred dollars. And if you really couldn't afford that, it like puts you in an awkward situation. So I think that brought up too.
The coach decided to go to Wellsley and that it's like was exponentially more expensive. So then there was the stress, right, of like, how are we going to afford that? Oh, we'll do a fundraiser. The boys will do a video. They brought in a ton of money, but. Doing that every year is almost impossible.
Exactly.
So I totally get, you know, know you get that. But so anyway, in that whole. Thorting out of that situation, the girls were kind of looped into this.
Yes.
And we've just been kind of going, doing nothing. So we were just trying to understand like, how does this impact our program? Because we never really had a problem. We don't have JV.
Right.
We are moving over to Canton, but last year we were told that we were going to Franklin. We went to Franklin. The coach couldn't go to Franklin, so then we had to go scramble to get practice ice. Then Franklin was left empty and paid for. So as as a girl's parent and and because I've got so much history as a girl's parent and I've been captain. Three years in a row between my kids. I just want to be able to be prepared for any questions.
Yep.
Or we need to be prepared because they're going to be like, what's going on? Like, we don't have two teams. We don't, you know, we don't have all this ice that's needed. We have one sheet and three practices.
Do the boys and girls practice the same amount of times, like?
Yeah, I mean, Eric's got this conversation. I don't even know how many.
Wait, do the boys and girls practice the same amount of times per week? Or is that what you're saying? We can't, we're not talking about that?
Well, you can talk about it, yeah.
Do the boys and girls practice the same amount of times per week?
Yeah, varsity does. I think the thing that spurred this whole thing was JV, but.
Yeah, but so do JV and varsity kids in other sports pay the same fee or no?
Yes.
All right. So JV, because they don't practice.
Freshmen plays pays the same, they all play.
So that's, what's that?
Right. And obviously, like, they only play five days, not six days. So that's like kind of a opinion all sports.
Two days, two days or game days, right?
Right.
And you only really play, you can only play in MIAA six days.
Right.
So then you have four days of practice, right? We happen to have one day off. I think we practice three days. We do an off ice day, which we pay. For the program pays for it. The school doesn't pay for it. And then there's the two game days for those guys. So I'd say, what? That's five days of ice?
Well, I think, you know, what we had talked about. What we had talked about at one point was that she mentioned that they pay for a sheet of ice. That if we increased it to four fifty, that would limit the amount parents have to pay for sheets of ice because we collect more money. I think that was kind of what. What Eric had talked to us about and what was brought to us was. That the additional fee that everyone collected would would allow us to pay for sheets of ice, not having to go and ask parents for money for sheets of ice. That's how it was explained to me.
Correct. That sounds very boys' side. Do you know what I mean?
You're still paying for sheet of ice on the girls' side, right?
We're not paying for ice, except for captain's practice.
Except for captain's, okay. But during the season, you're not paying for ice?
No, we pay for off ice, which is like a spending condition.
Got it, okay, okay.
So that was really kind of, like, we understand what the boys are going through. So we were just wondering why we're being lumped in to that. Unless the unless the price of ice went up. You know what I mean?
Right.
Which Eric, which Eric did say that the price of ice has gone up significantly.
Yeah, he showed us, yes.
Years where like Jeff was saying that I think there wasn't deficit for, like hockey was paying. Less and other sports were like subsidizing.
I tried to find the like information online and I couldn't figure out.
Right.
How to get it, you know, just to see what the hourly ice time was.
Is there anybody online? That has questions about hockey?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Says if you, there's nobody, but I mean technically, before we vote. There is public input online as well.
Correct.
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions or are we ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote. I think I have myself some same question, some question, but I'm good to vote on this.
Okay.
Again, I I'm just coming from the spot. I'll just like. I'm going to, we're going to vote on this, but like, I think other sports were supporting hockey, so that's like. Got one in my mind, but and there might be some other issues with hockey and stuff. Just so you know, like, you are heard and okay.
It is helpful. It's all one bucket of money.
Yeah.
We need to hear that because we do pay more than like, say, when you track. But if it's still not enough.
Right. And that's why.
And I also understand the equity between.
It's still not enough, but it helps.
People forget about sometimes the girls, exactly. Right?
What I would say is if new information is being surfaced. When people are talking about things like. Do we need to bring Eric back? Is like if if we vote on this, is there going to be a storm afterwards?
I just wanted to make sure that you guys weren't being blindsided by this, given that we had it at the, right, but given that we had it.
Well, I would say we haven't because we've had this is we've had three meetings about this and the information is available. So nobody's blindsiding, but if Eric's not communicating, this is what we think is happening or we're not.
Yeah.
And we may want to pause and and.
And again, for anyone who does have a hardship with this too, right, like we do offer that assistance.
We do.
I'm good to vote. I just.
Me too. Okay. Then do I hear a motion to approve an increase in athletic fees for ice hockey from three hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Aye. Aye. Leo? Is he still there?
He wasn't there last time, right?
Can you see him on the screen, Tim?
Leo has stepped out.
Okay. Uh, the motion carries. Okay. Thank you guys so much. I do appreciate you coming to talk to us.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is the Mobile Phone Social Media Task Force. So Jeff, I'm going to turn this over to you to kind of.
Sure, I mean, I I addressed it a little bit earlier, but I so we're going to look at sending something out to families. And getting this going in October and looking at getting student representatives, school community representatives, parents, teachers. And administrators on this and and looking at, I think, use a similar model that we use with SEL and with the school start time is. Is identify key areas in that first meeting to see where people's interests are. And then have folks work in some of those areas. So if you're going to be looking at mobile devices, that's one. If you're looking at social media, that's another. You're looking at all digital, that's another. And I actually want to talk to Jill Walsh about this too. To kind of get her sense of what some of the focus here is that this group should be working on. So I think that's that's kind of it for now and we'll get it going in in October and. I don't know if you want to use the same method as we did with the school start times where you guys pick the parents, that that works for you. I don't know if you want to do that, but. It's fine with me either way.
Yeah.
We're going to pick the parents. I think that is.
Last time we let all parents.
Yeah.
We had, right, how many people?
Yeah.
So if we had more than we did last, I think the last time it worked out because of the number that applied, would we be looking for a specific skill set? Would that be more helpful than just, I'm interested in this?
I don't know. I mean, we were lucky enough to have like, what I think were some some skill sets in the other group.
You're not kidding.
Uh, and I kind of, I think I was kind of the lead on that, but we had enough parents so I didn't have to make the decisions. But and this affects all of the people we love the most and our children. So like if I'm like, I think we. See how it plays out? Or do you want to be more, are you asking?
No, we don't have to decide right now. I'm just asking.
I think we should ask people why they want to do on it or if they do have a special like a skill that like, oh, I I already have done this at my school. I'm it, right?
Agreed.
But it's not needed. I also think being on the other committee. We had a lot of drop off.
Right.
Right.
Or people didn't come to meetings.
Yes.
So we ended up with very few parents. So I feel like we could even, yeah, I think stressing the time commitment and even if we had a few more raise their hand and say they do it, I think that'd be okay because the reality is you're going to lose.
Because the teachers, we have to get them out of way. It's hard for.
Yep. So I think just stressing the time commitment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Overarching, I thought following the same process as start times last year, that that was excellent. I do, the makeup on this one is, what's the, sorry if you said it. Number of teachers versus.
We haven't even put the numbers down yet, just just the broad of this is what we're going to have, but not the numbers. We haven't broken it down.
I think the only thing we can probably say is we can only have two school committee members.
That's that's the definite.
Yeah, no, so far, so far, so good. We know that. Let me let me give you the context. Was just, you don't want to necessarily have. Fifteen parents and then five participating at the end. If there's items where, when they make a recommendation, you they vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you want to just, you know, suggest that it's a commitment.
Yes, yes, that's where we just had.
Yeah. Saying it is a commitment or or we could have, you know, participants and voting members if. But that that would be the only.
Well, I think we did a good job. Like, I think if someone wants to know what's going on, we do that like session like we did last time.
Right.
And like anyone could come and talk.
Yeah.
First having to be on the committee.
Post everything online too.
Yeah.
Those on the website.
Yeah, I love the like, I thought the process last year was great.
Yeah. Are you going to have teachers from all the schools or are we going to focus this more on middle school and high?
I think all the schools.
K through twelve, yeah.
I think so.
Parents should be K through twelve as well.
Yeah.
Oh, I think, yes, I think parents, because you'll get there. I just wasn't sure if like, right, if you're a memorial teacher, like. This might impact you very differently than when you're sitting in a seventh grade class.
That's what makes the conversation more like rich, right? Like it's understanding. Memorial student, memorial teachers and parents, understanding what high school and middle school parents and teachers are seeing. And then vice versa, right? Like, I guess I would be like, I think the amount of like third graders that like. Want to phone and talk about phone might might be a little surprising to some parents of older children, right? Like. I think that that space is something that can just help the conversation continue to go outside the.
Yeah, I think it can help the conversation. My question was more around, right, if we're trying to come up with either a policy or more. What we want to do, I think it may be. Hard for people to. Imagine as a kindergarten teacher, what's the right policy to put in place for a tenth grader?
Yeah.
Or even, right, I think it's, I agree that it's the enrichment of the conversation, but I I wonder like, right, if you're trying to create. New policies for certain grades, like do the people who are currently working with those grades have more insight?
And I would just add too that, you know, one of the members of the school start time, her own children went through a school start time.
Yeah.
So she had that lens as a parent, which was really helpful too, you know, because she had already been through it as a parent. So she. She got to see what it was like on her own kids and then as a parent, but also could bring that teacher piece too. So that that could, I don't know if that could happen in memorial, but it it could happen.
Yes, exactly. There are people, like the parent side, I see it's more like I just wasn't sure about the teachers and staff.
Yeah.
So Diana, the one thing I would say, because I I've talked at least offline. Dr. Marston and I encouraged him to really say have even leadership. Of that task force, is that correct? To have a member from the elementary and secondary. Because I and and when you just said that, I think the the scope is across the schools. So I don't like, it's not, hey, we're going out to look at. A new policy in the high school or the middle school. We we that's what we've talked about a few times during the summer as well. It's. And it's it's broader than policy.
But it looks a lot different in Memorial than here, this building, right?
Right. And I think you maybe have to just be clear about what you want this task force to accomplish.
Right, what's the end goal?
Like very clear, like what is the end goal, right? Because like even my point of view is like, is the my end goal in my mind is thinking, oh, we want a policy for cell phones, right? But if the task force is actually thinking about, I don't know, social media use across, like, I just think we need to be very clear in what we're asking people to. Come up with or what the purpose of it is.
Yeah, I agree. I I I was going to, I was going to say that I think it should be almost like more. Parents than like teachers and because like generally, I think we're pretty even. But I think if in my brain, I was thinking the task force is is a lot more because now we we strengthen the policy, right? We did that. So it's more about like. Yeah, I was thinking of it with like more parents and what's going on and how do we help our community, like with some teachers and some educators, but they give a lot of time to our to our kids anyway. If this group is more parent-heavy, I think that sounds okay. So I'm with you. Like, I think it could be a different makeup where it's. A little more secondary, middle school educators and parents from across the board, but like more parents than we might typically have on a task force.
Yeah.
But again, I think the goal is an important thing that we can figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, I think just, and this is very broad, obviously, but looking at, you know, the the impact in social media on students, on teaching and learning. Support and education for families, recommendation for policy, like, to me, those are some of the key things that we should be looking at. And it could be, we could. And it could be, we could delete some of those or add some, who knows, right? But I think those are some of the key areas that we should be looking at as a, as a task force.
Okay. So we're looking at the next meeting, having more concrete what we're looking for.
Absolutely.
And then
Okay.
Uh, what we'd be sending out to parents in regards to like getting applica, or whatever the application.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and then as well from us and like how many of your staff is gonna be there and like what the time commitment looks like so we can really stress that.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on that then?
No.
Okay. All right. Next up is the Medfield School Building Committee update. Let's see. So at our last meeting, we talked about site selection again. Uh, we moved our vote for site selection to November and an October meeting, uh, we're gonna be hosting it at Dale. It's gonna be a little bit more of a public forum, public forum. We've invited the abutters and any other member of the public that again would like to speak to us about site before we vote on it. All members of the school committee are welcome to come if they have thoughts or have heard from people about, um, site selection and want to speak to the SBC. We'd love to hear from you.
What's the date of that meeting?
That meeting will be October ninth, so the day before our meeting here. Seven o'clock at Dale. Uh, tours of Dale's will also, sorry. SBC is also gonna be at Medfield Day. Um, the FAQ that we've been handing out at pin night will be the same thing that they have there. Um, there'll also be a sign up. There's gonna be tours of Dale offered um, on ten eight at four thirty, so October eighth at four thirty and October sixteenth at one o'clock. So again, if you've, if someone's ever said to you, I really wish, I want to see the inside of Dale, just send them over to, um, actually, you could probably just reach out to any of us, but you can also send them over to the, um, SBC booth at Medfield Day and they can sign themselves up.
Is October sixteenth the half day?
Nope.
So we're gonna do tours of Dale while kids are there?
While kids are there, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted people to see what it's like with kids in the room and that kind of thing.
Like small groups, like supervised.
Oh, absolutely.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's not a free fill. No, we're limiting it.
Oh, no, no, no.
I feel like uncomfortable at times at this random, like just
It'll be with Jeff or Steve and it'll be small groups. And if we got too many, we were gonna push it out different time, yes. Um, and then we're still waiting to hear, uh, from the MSBA.
Right.
So. Anything else to add on that? Okay. Any questions on, uh, SBC? Okay. Uh, up next, we have the, we have communication um, and community engagement. Did you guys have any updates from your open houses or pin nights?
I didn't talk to that many people at my open house last night. Uh, but you know, the two major thing, we had the FAQ on the school building committee and then uh, school start times were the two things that people were asking about. And I kind of let them know we're hoping to vote in October, but it might be November and those are two big things I think that people are interested in or have heard about on the, on the street.
Okay.
Same. I think that I didn't talk to many people, but I do think it's important to have a table there if you're going to have a table of MCP, PTO, you know, CPAC. Like, I feel like having the table is important just for visibility.
Yeah.
Or I guess brand awareness that
Yeah.
Like
I agree on that.
School committee's here. So I think that's the takeaway I would give.
Yeah, no, I thought, uh, so I was at Blake, at the first one, it was the eighth grader. So that's always the one that's, you know, they've been a few times. But I, I agree. I, I mean, I think it was the presence. I, I actually I, I praise to Michelle. We, we've talked about it, I think, since I've been here. Hey, we should go to the pin night.
Right. But you organized it.
Yeah, to actually do it and
They said yes.
Between Jeff and Andrea, the, the signs and having that, I think it's important. Uh, and for me, it was great to also hear, you know, like it was, they did a great job in, in the middle school the presentation. But there's some of those things you heard about this, the strategic plan was coming through. So I think I was really happy we participated. Maybe, hopefully other people were happy we were there.
Yeah. Reese and I were at Memorial together, so he was behind the table with me. And we kind of just smiled and waved to everyone that went by. So we did, right?
Because where we set up in Memorial in the hallway?
Right in front of the big screen that has the lunch menu and the birthdays.
Yeah. So see, I also think in Memorial, like everyone walks in that way. I went to Dale. Dale's a little different.
Right.
People just like go, like
Right.
Set up in the cafeteria. So it's not as much as like everyone walks by you.
Yeah. Last year, so Steve actually asked Kelly and I yesterday when we were at the PTO meeting where to set the tables up, because last year they were, do you remember? They were like, they were against the wall there and it was just, it created
Really walked in.
Yeah, but it created, it's like you couldn't stop. Like, I remember I was like waving to Nessie as I got carried in the stream of people up the stairs. So, yeah, we said that if there was food in the cafeteria and people in the scavenger, I would have to go anyway.
Yeah.
Then they'd still see you and can talk to you, but maybe it wouldn't be that like, you can't stop.
Yeah, you're stuck in the hallway. I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just a light note, but I, anytime I'm behind like a, a table like that, it's a technology conference. And this was a much more enjoyable crowd.
That is, that is true.
Yeah, I was thinking you, you may know the, the routine.
I know.
I was like, this is different. I kind of like this.
That's funny. Um, and then so have you guys touched base with any of your PTOs yet or?
I have not, but I would.
I had conflict. I had a bunch of meeting dates. I just couldn't get them, but we had coffee at Blue Moon. So we've been in touch with them and
That's your Blake?
Uh, I am Blake.
Blake, okay.
Yeah, so I met with Kristen and Amora. We're, you know, we're like, I'm like, sorry, guy, if I can't make the meeting.
Yeah.
They're very cool. They're like, we can do Blue Moon and just kind of let you know anything we have going on.
Okay.
So we're still, that eyes on.
Um, I met with Dale. I went to their meeting yesterday. So it was pretty cool because the, I hadn't seen this from previous PTOs, but they did actually, like the PTO did a bunch of building on top of all the work Michael and all the other people did. They, the PTO did updates to the building this year as well. So they added, um, a calming room for students and a pumping room for moms. Um, and also added an additional fridge and ice machine in the staff room. So I just thought it was cool that they had like, they found the fridge, I think, on Facebook Marketplace. And then was able to use PTO funds and someone with the truck maybe to bring, I don't know, I was, I was like very impressed with the, like, the the level they went to be able to like help the teachers and do something. Yeah, exactly.
And that, that pumping room is huge.
I know.
But like teachers are going most of the day. So like have a space to do that for new moms is huge.
It is.
Um, we went through that at Wellesley and at the math department, I took a friend's old fridge in my pickup truck and threw them in there.
They were in there, yeah.
Some more.
Yeah. Um, the Rainbow Run's gonna be on October second for Memorial and Dale and October seventh for Wheelock. Um, and then we approved a grant to bring in an author. Um, and then the other thing that I thought was really cool that's happening at Dale right now is the whole school is reading The Wild Robot. And then there was talks about if they would be able to figure out how to go see the movie. Uh, because the movie The Wild Robot's coming out this fall. So they were working on, they still have talked to Jeff and tie it back to curriculum and things like that. But they had some interesting ideas on what they could do there. Anyway, I just thought that was really cool that the, the entire school's reading that together. So it sounds like the teachers are reading it to the students during like different snack parts of the day and things like that, but
You would be a great author to get.
So they, they tried. It's because he's gonna be at
He's gonna be at Untold Story.
He's gonna be at Untold Story, but they reached out, they had already reached out to his, um, publicist and it didn't sound quite like he would be able to also.
Do it. Because, yeah, I know he's going there.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on communication or community engagement? Okay. Tim, do you have an update on the policy review process?
I do, and I was just looking at one thing real quick. Second. So maybe I'll
Are we online?
That's what I, I believe we are online. So the, we did, um, and I, I guess I'll do this. So we are still waiting, um, the third party, um, with MASC uh, basically takes our entire manual. They do some final tagging content, whatever they do, so that when you go to the website, you just click on whatever section and it comes right up. So that, uh, will probably be another month or so. And, um, but they sent us over all the, everything official as PDFs. That's the official policy manual. And I believe, Andrea, tell me, it's, we are online.
It's there.
Okay.
Yeah, so everything's online and it's consistent with what we have approved. And the only thing that, um, they, they do is there's a little mini guide right at the beginning that just explains to anybody who goes out there.
Okay.
What it, what is it? So that I was, I should have looked.
Yeah.
Because that's this morning. Or, or I, I guess it was yesterday, Andrea, when we said, yeah, let's, let's go down. So it's, it's good news.
Yeah, that's great news.
That's a, you know, there's nothing worse if somebody reads policy from a while ago.
Old policy, yeah.
We're watching clicks to see what's happening. Hopefully, hopefully it's not gonna bring the website down. Owen, we okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. But watch tonight.
And then he said, you think another month or two for the MASC one?
Yes, I think we communicated right is most important.
Correct.
And rushed is appreciated.
Okay.
For sure.
All right. Well, that's cool. That's very, very good stuff. Any questions on that? Any informational items?
Uh, Madam Chair, I have two.
Okay.
Um, so in your materials, you have a September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four letter, uh, to Robert, uh, from NEAS.